Meetings called to order at 6:01. Natalie, may I have roll call, please?
Chairperson Phil Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Joss.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Bard.
Here.
Commissioner Eric Westlin. Commissioner Christina Bickley. Alternate Robert Axemacher.
Present.
Alternate Tom Wood.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioners, any amendments to the agenda? Staff, any amendments? No. Determination of alternate voting. Both of our alternates will vote tonight. And public comment, this is an opportunity for anybody who wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda to do so. Do we have anybody signed up for anything not on the agenda? We do have somebody wishes to speak on something. Okay. Okay. All right, we'll give it a moment. Hang on, hang on one second. Okay, so we're, we are, public comment is open. This is an item that is not on the agenda, correct? Okay. All right, if you could state your name and address, please, and make sure the microphone, is the mic on, staff? Appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes, but we won't be real strict on that.
Yeah, no, it won't, it won't take long. Thank you, Commission, for allowing me to speak here. I live at 4014 Kern Street. My name is Chris Alberico. And you, right now, there's a project going on. I think it has to do with the augmentation pond that's going on just north of our property, not too far north of our property. Just had a couple of comments on that. I know this is sort of late in the game at this point, but they've been starting work. First, they started at eight o'clock a couple of months ago, and then they moved to 7:30 in the morning, and now they're starting everything at seven in the morning and also on Saturdays. We get up early, so it's not really that big of a problem, but it seems like a seven o'clock in the morning start time is pretty early with all those giant heavy trucks that are moving around. And the other thing I had is this, just that they, for two months, they just moved dirt around. I, I mean, it's just a comment, I suppose. I know there's nothing maybe you guys can do about it, but only in the last month have they really gotten a lot done. The first couple of months, we were watching right outside our upstairs window, we can see everything going on, it just didn't seem like the, they were really accomplishing anything. So that's, that's really all I had to say.
Don, I don't, I would think that was something you might be able to offer some thoughts on, both those things.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just be really brief. We, we had the same thoughts about the, the pace of what they were doing, but they're, they're getting a little more in earnest with the, with the process now. And, and so as far as the, the hours of operation, they're, they've been within them during the week. If they are starting at seven o'clock on Saturday, that's something that we can, we can have an influence on.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and then it's just that they've been spreading a lot of dirt and dust in the air for the last three months. It's just, it's everywhere. It's on the side of my house, she, all the, all the shutters and everything. So, yeah, it's, it's just been pretty messy. And, I mean, we're just one, one family, and I don't, I guess I don't expect a huge amount of like watering down of the soil or whatever of the dirt, but it just seemed like once in a while, they, they should be watering down that dirt around the neighborhood there.
They, they are supposed to be doing that on a regular basis, so we'll, we'll check on that also.
Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else? Public comment that is, I am not on the agenda? Nope. All right, we'll close the general public comment. The consent agenda consists of the, only of the approval of the November 2nd, 2021 meeting minutes. Commission, commissioners, any additions or corrections to the minutes? Staff, any, anything? Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
To approve?
To approve.
Okay, thanks. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Five oh vote. Business items, first item, item 6A, Timoth landing, seventh filing, final plat. Kevin.
Thank you, Chairperson. As we hopefully have gotten things up. So as you'd mentioned, this is the Timoth landing, seventh filing, final plats. The owner is CAC Timoth. Applicant is PCS Group, represented tonight by Mr. John Prestwich. This final plat proposal is located essentially at the northwest corner of Fourth Avenue and the future extension of the Timoth Parkway, just to the east of Old Town Timoth. This property is owned, R2, single-family residential. This final plat proposal is for 55 single-family detached fee simple lots. Those lots will range from roughly 7,500 square feet in size to just over 12,000 square feet. The density for this area will be roughly 2.6 storing units per acre. With this filing specifically, they are providing 32% open space, which includes a pocket park with playground equipment, and then trail connections to the rest of the Timoth Landing subdivision, and then ultimately into Old Town Timoth. Staff has reviewed this application against the review criteria. It is in conformance with the approved preliminary plat, which was also provided in your packet as well. With that, I will turn it over to John Prestwich for a brief presentation.
Good evening, everyone. First off, thanks for taking time this evening to hear about this final plat proposal. Again, John Prestwich with PCS Group, 200 Kalamaz Street, Denver, Colorado, 80223. I think you're aware, but we are the land planners and landscape architects for the Timoth Lakes community. Again, obviously with Kevin's presentation, this is a pretty simple application, and I'll, I'll try and keep it relatively brief. You know, I always like to take a quick moment, you guys have seen this before, but to acknowledge the team and obviously thank Kevin and all the reviewers that have helped us get here this evening. So this slide depicts the existing sketch plan for the community. Really to kind of give it a little bit of context, the blue dashed line is really highlighting the filing seven area, and then you can see the other filings that have been previously approved. Kevin showed this one, too. I wasn't, I didn't realize you were going to do that, but this is, again, just right from the preliminary plat. Again, filing seven is outlined in blue on this slide. And then this is really an illustrative version of the final plat drawing, as well as the final landscape plans. As Kevin mentioned, the proposal is for 55 single-family detached fee simple lots, again, ranging in size from about 7,500 square feet to about 12,000 square feet. Again, that's consistent with both the approved sketch plan and the preliminary plat. You can see on the illustrative how the trail connections work and where the open space and pocket park is. And that really wraps this up. I mean, again, the proposal is consistent with the approved sketch plan and preliminary plat. You know, again, the proposal's been thoroughly reviewed by town staff and referral agencies, and staff has recommended approval. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time and be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Anybody signed up? Public hearing on this item? No? Okay, we open, close the public hearing on this and bring it up here. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Prestwich?
I have a question, Phil. Stormwater from this filing goes off to the Timoth Landing Lakes, the North Lake, I think in particular. And I've got a question, it may have been brought up in some of the other filings. Are the lakes lined with a clay or plastic liner?
No, the, so Kevin said you might have some questions on the lakes, and actually, as long as the augmentation people here, too. Part of the reason that it, it didn't look like much was happening in the first period of time was they were building the actual slurry wall on the outside. So that was quite a long process before they started taking the earth out to create the lake. That's, that's not your question. Sorry. The lakes are designed to carry stormwater. The stormwater will actually flow through the lakes into T-Rock. The water level really won't fluctuate because it's, they're based on groundwater, and they're not lined because of the fact that they're actually being fed with groundwater. So that the easiest way, I was talking with the engineering team, to try and, at least in my mind, I'm, you know, a little bit of a layman on this, but in my mind, the easiest way to think about it is, it's almost like you're digging a trough and exposing the river. So that water will continue to flow. It, it really goes to South Lake and then goes back to the Pooter River. So the lakes won't be stagnant because it's always going to have moving water in them. So it won't breed mosquitoes because, again, it's moving water, not still water. The detention portion gets funneled off and goes into T-Rock. The, the regular water that's flowing through goes back to the Pooter River. Did you have another question?
So are they designed as detention or retention?
It's not retention, no.
Simply detention?
Well, detention is a portion of it, but the detention, when, when the detention portion, the storm portion goes into those lakes, within 72 hours, it has to come out the bottom of the lakes and go into the T-Rock. Does that make sense? It's, you're, there's a mixture of two waters in there.
Sure. I understand the groundwater and so forth, but groundwater elevations do vary with seasons with, if they dry out or if they...
And that's, so the augmentation pond will actually feed them as well.
I see.
So they shouldn't fluctuate by more than about four inches. As the engineers were describing it today, that's what the floats are set at. So they really shouldn't fluctuate by more than about four inches. And if they dried up, that would be a huge problem, not just for these lakes, but for this region, because that would mean all the groundwater is gone.
Sure. And are they maintained by?
By the district.
By the district?
Yep.
Okay. Not the town?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Tom, are you, this is why I'm glad we have different experiences and backgrounds on this, commissioned. Are you comfortable with?
I understand what he's saying. I'm not entirely convinced, but that's okay.
Well, outside of this, or however you wanted to have that conversation, to get yourself convinced, we can make our engineers available to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Don, any, anything else? I know we've talked about this before, but I appreciate the fact that Tom continues to have concerns about it.
Yep, no, understand, and I think Mr. Prestwich did a good job, even though that's not his area of expertise.
It is not, but...
But, but the, the whole concept with this is those, those lakes, their, their system, they've dug them, they've reduced, they've drawn down the water table, so it basically de-waters their project. And they're, and so that's why that, that water elevation is going to stay so constant because it's right in the middle of the, of the, of the alluvium, and they are, the augmentation pond augments all the evaporative loss that's happening there, so water balance is, is achieved.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
Absolutely. Am I the only one that I thought I understood the concept of detention? What, what is the difference between detention and retention? I thought they were all detention.
No. Detention is just like John said, comes in and 70, you know, they have to, it, it's, it is detained and then released at a rate that's historic. Okay, so the downstream places only see what's been historic. They don't get, they don't see any of the increased amount of flow because of the added impervious area. Retention is where they build the pond big enough so that it stays there, seeps into the ground or evaporates. So generally, if there's a retention pond, it has to be, I don't know, three, four, five times as large as a detention pond to make that work.
Okay. Tom, you tracking with that?
Yes.
Other questions on this same subject or others related to filing seven?
There's no changes? I didn't read any, there's no changes since last time we looked at it.
No, there's not changes from the preliminary plat.
Okay.
Lisa?
And is the Parkway proceeding? I, this, I know it's kind of external, but with the railroad crossing and with the Parkway, because this goes, obviously this feeds right to this development, you can't have people getting there any other way.
No, for sure. I don't know, Don, if you've got an update on that or...
We are in the process with the railroad.
And our construction plans have been submitted, so...
They have.
It's gonna have to be, right?
At the moment, we'll, we'll continue to appraise you as to the glacial speed that we get through the railroad process.
And this, along with the third and fourth filing, needs the Parkway to be constructed for this. So we, we have been in communications with, you know, the developer on the, the timing for construction, what is going to be constructed for, you know, access, for getting some of these filings on, online. But yeah, that Parkway is a critical item for this and the third and the fourth filing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they do need to construct the third and the fourth filing to then get to this seventh filing.
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
I see a number of green areas here. Which one is actually the pocket park?
Right where he actually has the arrow to filing seven.
Yep. Right along the trail.
Marty, something else?
Nope.
Nope.
Are there any, any issues yet to be resolved, staff, that you would be working with the developer on, or is everything hunky-dory at this point?
We're all hunky-dory.
Okay.
It is a technical...
I know that. After 10 years, I'm well-versed in. All right, very good. Commissioners, anything else on this? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion on business item 6A, Timoth Landing, seventh filing, final plat?
I move a...
All right, I have a second to Lisa's motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. John, thanks. Business item 6B, floor and decor site plan. Kevin?
Thank you, Chairperson. So I'm pretty sure this is the moment you all have been waiting for, going through the Connell items. So as you mentioned, Chairperson, this is the floor and decor site plan. This property is owned by Connell LLC, represented tonight by Sherry Welch and Grant Nelson. The applicant is Centerpoint Integrated Solutions, represented tonight by Stacy Hagerson. This floor and decor site plan is located immediately south of Costco, at the southwest corner of Swetsville Zoo and White soul Street. That zoning for this site is the regional commercial, which was just recently approved by UN Planning Commission last month, kind of highlighted there in the blue. This site, or this site plan is located on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Ladera subdivision that you had seen earlier this month, highlighted there in blue, as well showing the overall location within that subdivision. This site plan proposal is for a, just roughly over 79,000 square foot floor and decor retailer on roughly the 7.8 acres of that Lot 1 within the Ladera first filing. The use of a retailer of that type is permitted within the regional commercial zoning district. The parking requirement for the 79,000 square foot to use, per the PD overlay that was recently approved, would be 319 spaces based off of the four per thousand square foot, which includes 788 spaces, six electrical vehicles charging spaces, and six electrical vehicle charging spaces. This proposal is providing 314 spaces, including 788 and six electric vehicle charging spaces, along with five bicycle spaces. Staff does support that reduction of the five spaces from the overall requirement, since our standard land use code requirement is, would have been 265 parking spaces. So even with that, they would be exceeding it by 50 spaces, just the PD overlay, which increased the parking. Just the PD overlay, which increased the parking, is why they are not being able to meet requirements for parking. This site plan also provides twenty four percent landscaping to meet the twenty percent that was required per the PD overlay. Staff has reviewed this site plan application against the PD overlay and against the remaining land use code and has found it to be in conformance with the regional commercial zoning regulations and the PD overlay regulations. Staff has also found that it meets the Timothy Design Criteria Manual and that the adequate utilities will be provided to the site with the construction of the Ladera subdivision as they will be tying into White soul Street. With that, I will turn it over to Stacy, who has a brief presentation.
So good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stacy Hagerson. I work for Centerpoint. I'm representing floor and decor on behalf of the site plan application here in Timmouth, Colorado. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with who floor and decor is, but they were founded in two thousand and they are a high growth specialty retailer of hard surface flooring and related accessories. As of this year, they have around one hundred and fifty three stores across the U.S. And they're in about thirty two different markets. Their typical store sizes average around seventy eight thousand square feet, typically around eighty thousand square feet. So they are a larger format retailer. As for the economic benefit for the community, typically their stores generate between fifty to sixty employment opportunities. Of those employment opportunities, about seventy percent are full time employment opportunities, and they typically hire within the local communities that they operate in. An average ticket price for their customers around four hundred dollars. And an average store sells between twelve and twenty million dollars annually. So as Kevin mentioned, this site is located in the recently approved Ladera subdivision. It's lot one, located right next to the Costco. And then here we have the proposed site plan. This building is approximately about eighty thousand square feet. The store itself will consist of approximately sixty five thousand square feet of combined showroom and design center space. There's about eleven thousand square feet of storage warehouse and then about four thousand square feet of office. We are proposing two loading docks in the back, and then we do have a customer pickup area located in the front, right hand or left hand corner. As Kevin mentioned, we are proposing three hundred and fourteen parking spaces of the required three hundred and nineteen spaces. Floor and decor is actually a low parking generator, just due to their customer base only remodeling remodeling their houses once or twice a year. So they really don't generate the demand that a typical retailer needs, such as Target. And we do have a national traffic study that shows they really only demand one space per thousand. So in general, parking won't be an issue here. And then lastly, we are proposing a very nicely landscaped site. We are proposing a little over that twenty percent landscape requirement here. And then here we have the proposed building renderings for the site. These do meet the requirements of the PD overlay. The proposed elevations include the three striped color banding of the floor and decor colors. We have also included a classic gray thin brick veneer on the middle band, which is carried throughout on each elevation. We have the regal red metal canopies, awnings and copings are also carried on all four sides of the elevations. And then we do have small additions of the medium bronze coping on the elevations as well. And we are proposing pilasters throughout the elevations. Those pilasters are made of precast panels with reveal patterns, which are similar to the front entry feature. So it creates a cohesive and consistent theme for the overall building. And then finally, on the rear and left elevation, we have included a pop up feature with thin brick in the same three striped color brandings that you see on the building. So that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions that you have. We also have Vanessa Masell here, who's with floor and decor. So she would be happy to answer any questions that you had that I couldn't answer, but we appreciate your time and look forward to developing in Timmouth.
Thanks, Stacy. This is site plan, so there is no public comment, but I don't believe there's anybody here. And I appreciate you having some renderings. I'm I'm glad to see those we were.
Yeah.
They weren't in in our packet originally, but I had asked that we be provided those. This, I assume, is your standard store appearance.
It's not, it's been enhanced for the PD overlay requirements.
The colors, though, is.
The colors are the prototype or their corporate branding colors, yes.
Okay, all right. So we'll bring it up here to Commissioners, who would like to go first?
Thank you for your presentation. Couple of questions. I didn't see where you were pointing to when you were talking about the loading docks for customers. Where is that going to be located?
So it's called the customer pickup area, which is right there, yeah, right there. So this is an area where floor and decor customers who purchase large quantities of material, who can't, you know, push out their product to their car, they're able to drive up their car, park, and then a floor and decor employee will load the product in their car and they will drive away.
Okay, and then the back is where the.
Yeah, those are where the the loading docks are, yes.
And typically, as far as I noticed in our packet, it said that you have between four and six deliveries per day. Are these going to be semis? Are they smaller?
They are on a typical semi. They do happen on average, six times a day, five days a week, and the the times vary as well.
Okay, and what is the projected track traffic pattern for those? Are they going to head south and go down the White soul Street or they?
That is a good question. Vanessa, do you know that one? Yeah.
I don't see how they can go from from north. Let's.
You can go north.
Good question.
You can go north. It's just a matter of going back into that intersection and onto Harmony, and it's just.
It's not like they can turn left coming down the new extension and onto County Road five. So they'll have to go back up past the Costco. I think left turns, as you pointed out, were real difficult on County Road five.
Yeah. So that's just a, I mean, traffic in this area has just gotten to be a lot, so that was a concern there.
Could you, yeah, could you come up to the microphone so that many thousands of people out there listening, watching in tonight can also be privy to whatever these comments are?
Good evening, so I'm Vanessa with floor and decor. I manage the Southwest region. So typically, we like to do deliveries overnight because we keep a large selection of in stock materials. So we don't want that to interfere with the customer experience. So deliveries are done overnight when there's no customers in the in the store. So that also limits the impact on daytime traffic.
Which is a good thing, because like I said, that that intersection is already overwhelmed.
That help?
So what were the enhancements that you made to the the building itself to meet the PD overlay?
So we added pilasters to all four sides of the building. They're about fifty feet apart. We also added the thin brick veneer that's on that metal banding. We also added awnings to all four sides on the corners of each elevation. We added that pop up feature, which is all thin brick veneer and it's painted the the three color brandings, bandings of the floor and decor colors.
Thank you.
Marty?
So question to you, I think, is the outlet onto five, when is that? Is that scheduled to do to go at the same time or that'll be later?
Nope, that's gonna happen right away. In fact, they won't get a CO without it.
Okay, good. Just another outlet there.
Yeah.
I know you are. Well, the guys back there are really working on it.
Robert? I seem to recall that when we approved the PD overlay, we reduced the landscaping requirement. And I know that this plan exceeds the PD overlay requirement. I still get the sense, as I'm recalling, it's it's below what the original requirement would have been. I'm also hearing that we're anticipating lower parking demand. Have we, in this whole scheme, sacrificed some landscaping for some empty parking spaces? Does that make sense?
So the town standard requirement for this would have been twenty five percent, and they're actually at like twenty four point four or five percent. So virtually, they would have met the the standard parking requirement as well. That PD overlay requirement increase was a request by the developer for this, just because with, you know, how parking trends have typically gone, having a little bit more over parked was the was the justification behind that. With this being at twenty four percent, staff felt we really didn't lose much landscaping within this. Actually, we gained, they gained a little bit more landscaping, being at the corner of White soul and Swetsville Zoo, just because they have a little bit more off of that corner that would increase the landscaping from that standpoint.
And then with respect to the loading dock for the semis, it looked like there had been some efforts there for some landscaping screening. Is there any difference in elevation or anything else to help with the aesthetic appeal of the loading dock itself?
So we do actually, I wonder if it shows. So I mean, we do have a screen wall shown there of thin brick veneer as well. And we do have ample landscaping along White soul. And just based on our last round of site plan comments, we are including a few more evergreen type plants to also block the the trash enclosure. That's.
That was a, that was a request from staff to, and as Stacy had mentioned, add some additional for green trees to that portion of the of White soul, just for a little bit more enhanced screening. And then, yes, there is a screen wall, so you won't see much of the delivery truck as it pulls in.
Tom?
Yeah, I applaud the the landscaping on the back of the store, because there is potential for residential, I believe, across the street on White soul. And if you are going to have trucks coming in at night and loading, I might just ask, the lighting back there, will it be lighting that that kind of points down and not up so that it's not too bright all night long as they unload the trucks?
So typically, site lighting with on the floor and decor sites turn off by when the store closes. So they won't be on any later than ten P.M. And they're all shielded. There won't be any light spillage over the property lines.
Great, so when they're unloading trucks late at night, I'd be worried about noise and light. Great, well, thank you. I think that's a good effort.
And town code requires that no foot candles can be spilled off property line. So it all has to be directional lighting down. So in their photometric plan, which was in the site plan, shows no foot candles exceeding past property line.
That's great, because some of that residential, I believe, is multi story. So if you have somebody on a on an upper story, they'll get a lot of potential noise or light.
Could be potentially, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Staff is the usual question about those seemingly minor items that you would work with the developer on or floor and decor, in this case, on resolving to finalize this. What are those things, if you would please?
Generally, just some cleanup on the landscaping, such as adding the additional evergreens to that back side. Nothing substantial.
Anything else that substantial or otherwise?
No, at this point, it's just generally cleaning up cleanup of some of the landscape technical items within it.
Okay, and was there anything else other than the parking? We talked about the landscaping. And I and I personally, I don't, not as concerned about, although we don't want to ignore the landscape, not as concerned about that as I would be in a residential community. But anything else on that list, if you will?
Not from anything with the the PD overlay.
Okay. Well, you know, I, again, appreciate everybody on the commission drilling down on this a little bit more. This is, this is kind of the first ballgame of the new big season here, this huge development. So we we want to get this thing off, right? I I happen to believe council is concerned about really three broad areas. One is the attractiveness of the property. This appears to, I appreciate the renderings. This appears to be more than just a a big steel building, so it is fairly attractive. I think they're concerned about any waivers, and I don't think there's anything of great concern to us. And and third, I think it's safe to say, everybody wants to avoid the unfortunate circumstances that happened at Walmart, traffic flow there. And I think we're reasonably, if not wholly, certain that the traffic flow in this this phase of what will be many more things to come is is far beyond the problems we had there.
Without going past my lane, no pun intended, we've done everything we could to 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 make them accountable for the traffic that they will be generating.
All right, with that, staff, anything else you would add? Stacy, anything else?
No, we just appreciate your time.
Okay.
Quick, what is the timeline of this as far as relative to development, the roads, some of that? I mean, I know it's very, it's aggressive, but not in a bad way.
Yeah, so we're looking to start construction of March of twenty two is our intent. And then Grant's team could speak to their construction schedule, but I think they're planning on having all their roads completed by the end of October. And yeah, so.
Is there anything in that same vein? Is there anything that could send this or anything else kind of spinning out of orbit, if you will? There's no railroad fortunately involved in any of this. Is there anything else, Don, that staff that is a possible wrinkle?
There's nothing visible at the moment. So.
Safe answer. Okay, Commissioners, any other, anything else? Okay, all right, with that, do I have a motion on business item six B floor and decor site plan?
So move to approve.
All right. We'll give Tom that one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Marty, all right. All in favor, item of the motion on item six B floor and decor site plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, five oh, welcome to Timmouth. Reports. Commissioners, Tom, anything you want to add on the Citizens Academy now that you're.
Now that I'm a graduate?
Certified and a graduate?
It was a lot of fun, and I I think if if the town has these again, we should all consider going. It's really, even though I thought I knew some things, I learned a lot.
It's undetermined at the moment, so we're we're debriefing from this one, and we're going to figure out the strategy for next one. But we're going to time it a little bit better so that we have more daylight hours to do some things outside that we weren't able to do because the time change and the darkness kind of crept in on us, so. But and then we're going to re retool it a little bit in terms of maybe stretch it out over another week or or so. And and then maybe the duration may not be three hour events, it may be two hours and stretch it out. So we've got some little bit of homework and to do on our side, but it's pretty successful, I think, Tom. I think it turned out pretty well and lots of good positive feedback and folks that attended. It all seemed like they took a lot away from the from the experience, so. Eighteen, I think.
Eighteen, I think? Seventeen, one dropped out, seventeen.
I think there's a picture on the website, if you want to look. They had a, at council, last council meeting, they were all in attendance, and they presented their certificates up here with all masked up, so no, couldn't see who anybody was, but everybody was introduced. It was very impressive. Uh, Commissioners, anything else? Okay. Don, Kevin, Matt, Natalie? All right, with that, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you all.